All right, welcome everyone to the Court Trustees Workshop Tuesday, January 6, 2015. As you can see, Mayor Filoon's not with us tonight, he was not able to get off and work. I called earlier this afternoon and I went over a number of things that are on our agenda tonight with him. And I did get a call from Trustee Hawkins later in the afternoon and unfortunately, due to some personal matters, she can't make it here tonight either. So, it's the three of us, and we have a quorum, so we can make certain decisions tonight. We have ten items on the agenda, and there's probably a few that we will probably discuss that may have to table for whatever reason. So, and we will have a public comment period at the end of the meeting if we'll have any comments. So, the first thing on our agenda tonight is to consider the appointment of interim attorneys. We, back in mid-December, we did interview three attorneys, three different firms, for an interim attorney which will represent the village until we get the response back from our RFP, which recently went out. And the RFP responses will be back by February 6, right? Yeah, February 6. And at that time, depending on the amount of people that show an interest, or firms that show an interest, I'm sure the same three that we interviewed most recently will be in the mix. At that time, we'll start planning those interviews and have a more permanent selection made for village attorney. So with that, I'll open it up to the board for any comments as far as the firms that we did interview.
I was impressed by all three. I think just in terms of kind of ramp up time, maybe Bill Florence would be the most appropriate, at least just to fill in for a month or two until we get a full-time firm on board. I mean, I've known Bill from doing work for the fire company, he's a longtime member of the community.
I have to agree with Michael on this, and I also feel that his, he and the first group that we interviewed, the price was the same, but labor attorney's price was higher. And while the first firm may be very good in the long run, I'd just like to see who else responds to the RFP for that reason, and the fact that Bill is local and has a lot of local experience, I think he's the person for the interim job.
All right, and I did, again, I, finding out that Mayor Filoon and Trustee Hawkins was not going to be attending tonight, I did make phone calls to both of them and discussed a number of the issues, or a number of the items on our agenda. But I know that the, as I mentioned earlier, the decision to make an attorney selection tonight is a pretty important decision. We have a number of things on our plate, and it's something that I believe we should make a consideration and a vote on tonight. I also believe any three of the attorneys would definitely represent us in the best fashion. But I also believe that for the short term, that Bill Florence would be a good selection. So, I support that. I don't know if we have a motion to...
I'll make that motion.
Second. So, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Again, Mayor Filoon and Trustee Hawkins absent for that vote. The next piece of business is bill approval. And the bills were voted today. I don't personally see any issues with them. There was one that came in later on this afternoon that I talked to Mary briefly about that I would like to be able to research a little more. So, that'll be tomorrow morning.
Is the voucher for the fire company fuel oil in there, or is that a company?
I don't know, like, there's a warning trail that shows, I think it was the fire company.
Because they had three oil deliveries in the month of December. Bill seemed, you know, relatively high, I think, since fuel oil is so low.
Okay, it's a combination of, let's see what the Florida...
Maybe that's why, is because they put the highway department on the same bill.
Yeah, all these are listed in this garage, it's not the, it wasn't the other...
What's the date on that one?
Hmm?
What's the date and the amount on that one?
This one total is thirteen thirty, but that's a combination of the... One, two.
What's the amount?
I said percent.
Yeah, that's the only oil bill from...
Yeah, this is twelve one through twelve twenty-three, the one I had is twelve one through twelve six.
You said fire department?
No. Highway department.
Yeah. Is that what you said, fire department?
Yeah, fire department.
Yeah. Yeah, I don't think you, I can check with Ellen.
It's probably going to be on next week.
Okay. So, other than that, like I said, the one that's outstanding right now is this here, which we can bring up next week on our monthly, as far as approval on this one here.
What is it?
It's reimbursement for, it's from the health benefit package for one of the employees. Anyway, a motion to, so the bills, is it, order to?
Oh.
Second. All in favor? Aye. Aye. Approval minutes, approval minutes you have in your packet for the meeting that we had on December fifteenth.
I didn't have any changes.
Did I? I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the December fifteenth workshop.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. I say yes. So, that's, okay, the number five on our agenda is authorize signature on contract for special counsel to handle Article seventy-eight proceeding.
Can we do the, get the clearwater...
Oh, sorry. Yeah. So, what's a, number five, clearwater application?
I have a question on that. Do they really come and dock for the whole week, or do they kind of come and go?
I have that, it's not in my, it's not in my packet.
There you go.
Anyway, it's something they put in this early. To answer your question on this for the whole week, I believe that's the way it's been in the past, but they put it in early so they don't have any problem with it, or with other people coming in and asking for anything within that week. Whether we approve it, I know with our last discussion, even on the fifteenth of December, was whether or not we're going to ask Recreation to handle some of these docking requests. So, whether we approve this tonight, or, I won't be meeting with Recreation until January twenty-eighth, which is the end of, the end of the month.
So, can we forward it on to Recreation and just keep those dates kind of grayed out for now?
Yeah, we can do that. All right, that's what we'll do. All right, now we're on the authorized agency contract. Let me see what that is. You have a letter in your packet that is from...
Hogan and Rossi.
My packet's different. Hogan and Rossi. But, of course, it says, Dear Mayor Filoon and Court Trustees, you have asked us to represent the village of Cold Spring in connection with the above referenced matter. We will be pleased to represent the village in this matter upon the terms and conditions hereof. Our work will include answering the Article seventy-eight petition. Court appearances, motion practices, where necessary, appropriate settlement negotiations, and such other work as you may request, as performed in the way that the court goes otherwise. Again, I don't need to really read the entire letter. I know that we have Marie from zoning, Stephanie was, I was hoping she would have attended tonight's meeting, since she is a zoning liaison, who's attended all those meetings, but the attorney is Nancy Tagley Fiarro. So, we do have Marie early here from zoning to sort of touch on the fact that you were at all the meetings that she attended.
Nancy attended all of the, both the workshop and the three sessions of public hearings on this matter, so she's well-versed in the topic. She has already requested a delay, and so it has been rescheduled to January thirtieth with records due in on January twenty-third. Originally, I think that the court date was, I'm going to say January sixteenth, but since we didn't have counsel at that time, and the village board wasn't meeting, she took the initiative and asked for the delay.
I thought that Mary said that our insurance company was going to handle this, and that's why we didn't meet last week to do this.
She mentioned something as far as possible, the insurance company has responded to her and whether they handle the entire thing or handle a portion of it, she didn't get clarification on it as of five o'clock today.
Now that we're hiring an attorney, is it really necessary for us to have two? Do these fees, are these fees higher or the same as Mr. Florence?
It says it in the, in the letter, you'll see in the second paragraph.
No, I see the, I see these, I'm just trying to remember what we're paying.
It's the same as if we were paying whoever, Bill Florence or whoever our village attorney will be, if it was to fall into that timeline, you know. But the fact that I did talk to...
And if she was sitting in on all these meetings, how did we end up with an Article seventy-eight?
Pardon?
If she was in on all these meetings, how did we end up with an Article seventy-eight?
Someone can bring one.
Yeah. Anybody can argue that a decision is capricious and...
I did discuss this with Ralph, as soon as I was made aware that the Article seventy-eight was being brought against the village, sorry, against this article board, and recommended that he consider hiring after this proceedings on. And his response was, it makes sense because she was involved in all of the steps on this particular variance request.
And in speaking with Ralph, he verified that same thing, that she's very familiar with the case, very familiar with the process, and that's why they sent that letter in too. So, wouldn't have any problem representing us for that, for this situation. So, we do have a... Let me see here. Let me see if I can get the letter here.
On table, until we have a conversation with Mr. Florence at least.
I personally don't have any problem with, with hiring Nancy. I just, again, with my conversation with Ralph, he didn't have any problem with it. Stephanie really didn't have any problem with it, unless you both feel differently about the fact that we should...
I just don't want to duplicate the attorney services if we're going to have Bill as an intern, and he can fit this into his schedule. But then again, Nancy does know the whole back history.
It would be bringing him up to speed on everything. I think it would just be simpler to have her continue on in this.
I'll find that. All right, so, really entertain a motion to hire from Hogan and Rossi, have Nancy Tagley Fiarro as our lawyer to handle this for us. Second?
No.
I'll second it. All in favor? Aye. Aye? Opposed?
No.
Record two, one opposed and two absent. All right, number six, consider adoption of resolution number one dash two thousand fifteen authorizing Hudson River Greenway application. You see the, you have the, that resolution in front of you, also right beyond it, you have Hudson River Valley Greenway grant application, which Chair of our zoning update committee, Jack, was with us tonight. Jack, do you want to spend the time to go over that application with us?
Sure. The village signed a memorandum of understanding with the state in March of two thousand and thirteen for a six thousand dollar grant, which the village had applied to use as part of code update activities associated with the local waterfront plan. And because that portion of the local waterfront plan was delayed until sufficient funds could be secured in addition to the six thousand, which ended up being the NICE certa grant, the money, the six thousand dollars was never drawn down. And the MOU only remains in effect until the end of March of two thousand and fifteen. It was a two-year span. So, I was made aware of this late in November, and rather than lose the six thousand dollars, I contacted the contact for Greenway in Albany and learned that the village could not repurpose the money, but had to, in fact, withdraw its original grant and then apply again. So, the village trustees passed a resolution on December sixteenth, I believe, informing Greenway that the village intended, wanted to rescind the original grant, and was going to apply for a new grant, which needs to be done before the Greenway Board meeting on January thirteenth. So, I, then there was no one else to do the application, to tell you the truth. So, I did the application, speaking with Ann Im Pelletzieri, who had done the first one, and a back and forth conversation with our contact up in Albany from Greenway. And part of the application process is that the village Court of Trustees have to pass a resolution endorsing the application. Because the contact in Albany was, was away for the vacation, I sent a draft copy of the application up, not for any signal as to whether it would be funded or not, but just to signal whether or not the information was sufficient and clear in it. Basically, it asked for the same thing. It applied for ten thousand dollars as the first application did. I'm assuming that if they look on it with favor, did Bill reduce that ten thousand dollars down as they did the first time? The purpose of the grant is the same, it's for consultants' hours. We're finding, the code update committee is finding that the NICE certa grant does not permit as many meetings as we feel will be necessary to discuss certain things, and so I put in the application that if the extra consultants' hours are awarded through this grant, that's what it will be used for, but it's code update activities as the original one was used. The grant has to be up in Albany prior to next Tuesday. I'd like to wait until Thursday to see if I can get any information back from Albany to see whether anything needs to be tweaked on it, but in, this application will go, your resolution tonight endorsing the application will go as part of that package. And it will be there prior to the deadline.
Okay.
Thank you for that work.
Thanks, Jack. Any questions at all?
No.
All right, so we do have in front of us Village of Cold Spring Resolution Number One of two thousand and fifteen, supporting the Hudson River Greenway grant application, whereas the Village of Cold Spring is applying for the Hudson River Valley Greenway for a grant under Greenway Community's grant program for a project entitled Village of Cold Spring Code Update located within this community. Whereas the grant application requires the applicant to obtain approval endorsement of the governing body of the municipality or municipalities in which the project will be located. And now therefore, if it is resolved, that the Village of Cold Spring Board Trustees hereby does approve and endorse the application for the grant under the Greenway Community's grant program for the project known as Village of Cold Spring Code Update located within this community. As for trustee for motion...
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution Number zero-one dash two thousand and fifteen.
Second.
Second, and by trustee Fatty. Right on a roll call of votes. Trustee Michael Bowman, yes. Trustee Catherine Fatty...
Yes.
Trustee Bruce Campbell, yes. Three S. Trustee Stephanie Hawkins absent. Mayor Rockton absent. Resolution officially adopted on January sixth, two thousand and fifteen by a vote of three to zero. Thanks, Jack.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Next questions for the New York State DEC regarding the Boat Club. As you recall, over the past few weeks, we've had the advertising in the paper as far as sending out requests for questions. We did get some correspondence from the Boat Club. We know we're working with the DEC right now, especially in the month of January into February, where they put pretty much a final design on the cleanup down at the waterfront. There were some questions by a resident from below the tracks, or at least one question, which is in your packet. There's some questions that were sent to us from trustee Hawkins, which is in your packet. And then, actually, the letter that was dated back December nineteenth to me is one of the liaisons to the Boat Club, which really focuses on village business, not really anything related to the DEC, even though it was listed in this letter to me. I know that this item is something that we've discussed many times, and it's been in the paper many times, and we've gotten a lot of public input on this. If you want to discuss any part of our, anything that we can answer from tonight, or if you want to table this, I know that I spoke with Stephanie Hawkins, and she asked that we table it till at least next week.
There was also correspondence from George Tesalis, I don't know how you pronounce his last name, that came in today, the email. Especially in regards to that letter, I'd like to agree and table it until we at least have an attorney on board that can answer some of these questions.
Yeah.
Motion table.
Okay. Second? I say yes to that vote, so we'll be tabling that till next week. I know that the, sorry, some of the timelines...
The short ones.
Some of the timelines for the DEC is the fact that they want to stay on target with their design work. If you're going to have any kind of alteration or anything to it, it's got to be done in the immediate future, so if it's tabled, the discussion will happen next week, I believe. That's what the mayor chooses to do.
Till next week.
Yeah.
Does that mean the attorney will be on board?
I believe so.
I'm surprised he's not here, so...
I don't know.
Couldn't have walked away waiting.
We'll have to contact the attorney's office tomorrow as far as, I believe he's readily available, as all three candidates were readily available based on the situation, you know. Discussion of Green Plan correspondence, again, the Green Plan correspondence is, again, something that I did discuss with both Mayor Filoon and trustee Hawkins. It's something that they felt that we should have definitely legal representation for this. As you can see, there's a voucher, there's a letter expressing the concern from Green Plan, and a, in a bill that sort of expresses the work that they did in preparation of the grant. So, I think it's in our disinterest to table this as well.
Motion to do.
Second?
Second.
Well, I say yes to that vote.
You need an attorney.
So, we need an attorney.
Can't, you know, it's the thing to get yourself in trouble for, otherwise.
I do think the public needs to read this themselves as well, because I still have major doubts about the way that the whole NICE certa process went down last year, and some of the statements that are made in the letter, you know, I don't know, they raise the hairs on the back of my neck kind of thing, because I almost want to recuse myself from the conversation since I wasn't on the board at the time. And I don't know whether yourself, the mayor, and Stephanie knew exactly what they were signing on for when they, you know, because the statement's being made that, in my opinion, it's kind of a quid pro quo of, we're going to trade our application work for a guarantee that we're going to be the village planner moving ahead. And, you know, I, I've seen that done in the past, but I'd like to think that's not really the way we do things, but...
Look, in your packet, the last part of it, that's page three, it'll go into a little bit of the history of that old board meeting.
Yeah.
And you can see where...
I would like to, you know, ask the people who are on the board now that were there then, what their recollections of the meeting were.
The recollection, and I'm the only one on that board at the time, so the recollection was exactly what's stated in the minutes here, but it comes down to where there's a timeline in between this meeting and the fact that we finally got to the point of making a selection. And to tell you the truth, it's something that probably should have been brought up at the time of the interviews and everything else, that, you know. So, I sort of mentioned that that night, as far as we sort of favoring Green Plan in the sense that I knew something, but I didn't have this in front of me at the time, and then we made our selection based on the fact of being able to get a selection for that process.
I mean, because I, not to rehash the whole history of it, you know, I talked to Mike Armstrong, who was head of the LWRP back then, and, you know, he told me he didn't know about any of the work being done.
No, I was on the complex at the time, none of us knew. She walked in, and we found out after the fact.
So, I had to, you know, I appreciate that they spent two weeks putting together the application, but they come back, and I don't know. It'll, it'll be an interesting conversation with the attorney, I guess.
Wouldn't take a vote on that. Motion number table, the table.
Seconded, seconded, to the table to...
Oh, we need to vote on it?
It's correct, we did not vote on it.
So, I vote yes to table it.
Yes.
Again, we'll put on the agenda for next week, because it's something that we should have addressed sooner than later. Number nine, you see appointment of village historian, and it actually says omit. That was, and you have in front of you sort of a resume for Mark Farlow. That was a selection made by Putnam County for their historian. Speaking with Ralph and speaking with Mary, sorry, that it's really the mayor's appointment for that, and whether or not we have our own historian here in Cold Spring, or we make the recommendation of Mark Farlow. But that's, again, something that I was asked to table until the mayor's here.
At the county level, the historian is a paid position, right?
You know, I don't know.
I think it is. It doesn't pay much, but it's a...
I imagine it is, but, you know, again, we had, recently had Don McDonald as our historian for years, and I don't think, except we went a couple of coffee every so often, but it's Cold Spring versus the county. So...
I'm just curious if Mark has a background, and I'm sure, you know, with the West Point Foundry book that you put together and everything, that his knowledge of Cold Spring is unsurpassed.
Um...
Do we need a motion to table?
We need a motion to table. Second.
Second.
I say yes, table till, again, next week, handy? All right, the last thing on our agenda tonight is the West Bank Street sewer connection. You know, Mayor Filoon has brought this up over the past couple of meetings, and we seem to film you a resolution, consolidate a resolution for the West Bank Street sewer connection. There's also included in that paperwork a short EAF, which you can see was...
Is that the speaker?
It's mainly negative deck that we should have probably looked at and reviewed and approved. I talked to Mayor Filoon again about this this evening, and he wanted to make it clear that the village board is not agreeing to allow, we're just agreeing to have the engineering work done by Oakwood engineers, really under supervision of an engineer, an attorney, which we could definitely use Greg Phillips, our superintendent, and then it has to be due by Putnam County Health as well. So, this here is just, again, the resolution to approve the, the application. Any questions as far as this?
Where can we come up with fifteen forty, fresh in memory?
I believe that's, that's what Oakwood Associates, I don't have that paperwork...
That's what they charge?
Yeah. That they're going to charge to do the...
I think I'm going to save us all a lot of time and just make a motion to table until next meeting, until we can have this reviewed by an attorney.
Okay.
Just, you know, there's a lot of issues involved with a water line on a private road that may become public, and I know that there's other individuals in the village that have looked into doing similar things with their roads, and I want to make sure that everything is done.
Same for everybody.
Yeah, across the board.
That's fine, I don't have any problem with that. I know one more week as far as getting this presented, I don't think he's going to be doing any explanation.
He has printed out another copy of... For not another copy of, I just wanna ask formally to not get another copy of it, I've had eight copies of this thing. The amount of paper we wasted.
All right, so another motion to table, some of.
Second.
I'll say yes to that motion, or another motion to the table till our next meeting, which, next Tuesday. All right, that's pretty much everything that we had on tonight's agenda, I know, uh, we can open it up for public comment. I know, um, Mark, you showed up, we already discussed a few things as far as the, uh, questions from the New York State D E C regarding the Boat Club. Those questions that were brought to our attention, we tabled till next week, all right, so we'll have Mayor Filon, Stephanie Hawkins, trustee Hawkins.
The letter we received today.
Mike brought up a point.
From, uh, how do you pronounce his last name, T S?
Tesalias?
Okay. And what, does he have a position at the Boat Club, or?
No, no, he was just a, a person that frequent, frequents our club, stays over, and happened to have experience in this.
Other than that, any other public comment?
Uh, yes, in regards to the Green Plan matter, the last time you discussed this, the mayor gave some options, one of them was to, uh, dump, uh, B and L and hire Green Plan, or the other one was to not pay the bill outright. Where are you at with that? Are there still viable options to hire Green Plan after all of this, or no?
Well, I think, I think the possibility that you mentioned there was, is the fact that we didn't actually sign a contract with B and L yet, we did vote four to one on that as far as selecting them as our consultant. Shortly after that, of course, we received the correspondence from Green Plan, um, with the understanding that they had thought they, even though they went for an interview with us.
Right, understand.
They had thought they were gonna be one that would be doing the follow-up work for that consultant work. So of course you get a bill for seven thousand, six hundred dollars, or that nature, and you have to look at it and say, okay, what do we look, what do we do with that? And it really hasn't gone anywhere, and that's what it goes down to, that we want some legal representation as far as how we handle this.
Have you since hired, signed contracts with B and L, or no?
No, we haven't, no.
Okay.
But the zoning update committee, um, is, you know, what, they wanna stay on board with the work they need to do.
And the next stage of their work is having a consultant on board to assist them, and we don't wanna have that process delayed because of whatever we're talking about. So let's, just to be clear, hiring them is still an option, hiring Green Plan, that's still on the table?
I don't know if it's an option or not, it's, it's something that, again.
Personally, no.
No, absolutely not.
It's true.
So, we, we got some words from two trustees here anyway, but, uh, we've never.
Well, then it'll get sued by somebody else.
Okay, thank you.
But, uh, when we have a full board on, on next Tuesday, I'm sure the rest of that discussion will happen, and we'll have a plan in place to, uh, but in the meantime, I did speak with Jack, and B and L did talk to their superiors, uh, and they're, they're gonna come to our meeting on two, Thursday night of this week to sit with the, uh, zoning update committee, so. Anyway, any other public comment? Nothing, otherwise I entertain a motion to adjourn. Some move?
Second.
Second, I say aye. Remember, thank you.